We are live.
Great evening and welcome to the Trotwood Madison City School District Special Meeting, September 3rd at 5:00 PM 2020. The Board is operating under the emergency provisions passed by the Ohio General Assembly in the spring of 2020, enabling public bodies to conduct public meetings virtually due to the novel coronavirus pandemic. Those provisions do not address what happens when there is a breakdown in technology. Out of abundance of caution and to ensure compliance with Ohio sunshine laws, the Board will ratify the actions it took at the August 20th, 2020 meeting when technology failed. And as a result, the public was unable to access, access the meeting. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education and Public for the purpose, Public virtually, for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not considered a public community meeting. Mrs. Allen, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
I don't see Mr. Andrews, I'm just checking, and then Ms. Moore.
Yes, the meeting has been called to order. Madam Vice President, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes.
All are on mute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I now need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any changes? Additions or addendums? Being none, Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes, motion passes, the agenda has been adopted. Next up are consent agenda items. And Item A, ratify approval of mating minutes from July 9th, 2020, July 16th, 2020, July 23rd, 2020, and July 31st, 2020. Item B is ratify approval of FY21 amended appropriations. Item C is to ratify approval of agreement for the Ohio Medical School Program Services with West York LLC. Item D is to ratify approval of Purdue Pharma bankruptcy claim. Item E is to ratify approval of Cumberland Therapy Services LLC contract. Item F is to ratify approval of Maxim, Maxim Healthcare Services contract. And Item G is to ratify approval of student activity purpose statements and budgets for 2020, 21. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
So we're properly moved and second. Any questions? Being none, Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes, motion passes. The consent agenda has been approved, ratified. Uh, Item 3, Board, uh, Report. And Item 3A is approval of face mask policy. I need a motion to accept the policy as presented.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any questions? Being none, Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes, motion passes. Next item, Treasurer's Report. And Item A is to ratify approval of July 2020 financial reports. I need a motion?
I'll move. I'll second.
So we've been properly moved and second. Any questions? Being none, Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes, motion passes. Next item is the Superintendent's Report. And it's Item 5A, ratify approval of personnel agenda. I need a motion, please?
So moved.
I'll second.
So we're properly moved and second. Are there any questions? Being none, Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes, motion passes. Next item, Item 6, is adjournment. I now need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
We're properly moved and we have a second. Are there any questions? Being none, Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes, motion passes. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Hey Luke?
I got no signal in the back.
Luke? Yeah, I can, I got you.
I want somebody to see me and say something.
No, I, I, I was just looking at it on my iPad and it's like just the top of their heads were cut off. I don't know if we just, you. Okay, hold on. Okay.
Dan. Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes. Yes, Madam Vice President? Will you please lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
President Moore, excuse me, I'm sorry. We're, we're picking up, we're picking up the other meeting. There's somebody, hey, hey Luke? I got, I got Dr. Cosby on the live stream.
Yes, sir, one second.
Okay. President Moore, excuse me, I'm sorry. We're, we're picking up, we're picking up the other meeting. There's somebody, hey, hey Luke? I got, I got Dr. Cosby on the live stream.
Yes, sir, one second.
Okay.
Look.
He left to resolve some of the technical issues, he'll be right back.
Dr. Cosby, Dr. Cosby was still in the other meeting. She had not joined this meeting yet, now, now she's in there.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry guys, sorry guys, we are good now.
All right. Now she's, now she's ready.
Okay, Madam Vice President, will you please lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
Yes, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I now need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any changes? Addendums? Being none, Ms. Allen, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes, the agenda has now been adopted. Next item up is a presentation on our reentry plan proposal by our Superintendent, Dr. Riva Cosby.
Thank you very much. I'm going to, um, present on my screen, I have a short, um, PowerPoint presentation that I would like to share. All right, can everyone hear me now?
Yes, yes.
All right, so let's get started. Um, what we're going to talk about tonight is the fact that as we, um, continue into this process, we realize that reentry is of course what we really want for our students. We want our students to get back and have as much normalcy as they can as we move through this COVID-19. So tonight I'm going to talk to you about where we are with our reentry process. So what makes a well-rounded student? We all know that it's academics and extracurricular activities. If we want our students to be well-rounded, which of course is what our goal is, then we have to have both of those things in place. So academics during COVID-19, currently we are 100% virtual, as you all know. Why are we? We decided to go that route, if you remember, out of a preponderance of safety due to the pandemic. And unfortunately, at this time, you know, at one point we had moved into orange, we moved back into red. Things have not significantly changed, but as we look around us and see other students who are starting to go into school and things are changing, we are also having to consider those options. Again, we all know that the best situation for our students is to be face to face. How are we doing our virtual? Our teachers are providing a robust curriculum for our students. They are assuring that they are going to learn this school year. Regardless of how we are doing our work, we feel right now that our teachers are presenting an excellent, um, learning situation and, and it'll take time to actually see how this all plays out. You're going to hear from me a little later about our online, um, learning, what's going on with us right now. And you will see that we realize that there's always, um, opportunity for improvement, but this is why we are where we're going. So for how long will we be doing this? We're going to hope for change, hope that it ends before the first nine weeks of school is done. But at this point, we're looking at the first nine weeks of school. That's what we, um, started our discussion with and that's where we are at this point. Now again, anything can potentially change. Moving forward, what are we going to do? We're going to slowly open our buildings to our students. Okay? So change of the initial plan, as promised, we said we would monitor activity regarding our current model and we would adjust things as needed. After the Governor and the CDC changed their stance on education, particularly their stand on extracurriculars, we looked at where we are as a district. We looked at other districts throughout the state. We have heard from parents, we've had rally, we've had petitions, we've had surveys. We actually talked to people face to face, on the phone, we run into them, different places, and we continue to listen to what everyone is saying. At this time, we do continue to be a community that's in Level 3, which is red, so there is still community spread out there. Part 1 of our reentry plan involves what we're going to start as far as academics is concerned. So what happens next? And I picked these pictures because these are, um, symbols of our most vulnerable population. We have students who have, um, needs that we do provide for in our schools, but some of these needs cannot always be met virtually. So we plan to bring back our students who are the most vulnerable first. We start to open up that way. Those who will benefit from OT, PT, speech therapy, in person with embedded instruction from their teachers will be some of the first students. We actually have one or two who have already started this process. And, um, I have spoken with some of our therapists and people who work with these children and they really are excited about this. It would not be every day, of course, it would just be potentially once a week, but it's an opportunity for our students to get some extra help, those who really need this. We will start preparing for implementation right away and we will implement a schedule that will begin the week of September 7th. Part 2 of the plan is to bring back fall extracurriculars. You know, we had put that on suspension as we see that, um, people are finding ways to make this happen and we're not getting too much. I mean, we, we are getting some and we can anticipate that at some point, you know, we, we'll have to start, as the Governor said today, you know, notifying, um, parents and community and everyone of any cases, you know, that come up in the district. Those things are going to happen, they're happening everywhere, but people are still bringing back their fall extracurriculars. And so we want our students to have that opportunity as well. So, so the biggest question that I constantly get and the biggest thing that I want to address is, why is it that we can't just open up the schools and bring all of the students right back, right now? Why is it that we can't do that, but it's easier to do extracurriculars? How is it that other communities are, they're, they're virtual, but they're making the extracurriculars happen? So what is it, how is that so? So why not now for totally in school? Because in our buildings, we range from 300 to 800 students that's inside a building with teachers who some have underlying conditions and other, um, things that need to be addressed before you can bring back that number of students inside a small space. Um, we have to make sure that we are ready to socially distance our kids, have everyone masked to keep them safe. Why can we do this outside now? We're talking about 60 to 100 students. We look at soccer, we look at our other activities, um, we look at our band, we look at our sports teams. We're talking 60 to 100 students and they are outside. And outside is where everyone says that we're the safest. Even if we go out for something, if you're not right next to someone, if you're six feet distant, you can take off your mask and take a walk. Well, it's, it equates more to that than to having students inside a building. Also, time needed to prepare the facility to be safe for reentry of students. That is something, if, if you've seen the, um, buildings, when they are 100% ready, they have the signage on the flooring, which we've already started. We already put in the arrows along their hallways and things of that nature, but we have to get all of that ready before we bring our students back in. As opposed to our extracurriculars, if you'll remember, staff and students have practiced these things prior to us suspending it. So they're already, you know, doing these things and they're used to it, they know what they're doing. Teachers are honing their virtual skills because even once we bring our students in, we all know with the winter coming, flu season, potential second wave of Corona, we could bring them all in and have to then send them home. So we want to get good at this virtual learning. We want to be good enough that if we had to turn on a dime, you would still feel comfortable that your child was being educated this way. Um, again, coaches, advisors of organizations, they're all ready to start. They've already been doing it. Another thing for why not now in school, it's mandatory for our students. If we were to say we're going to open up our buildings and all students have to come back, that would be a mandate. Now, we could have some parents who, you know, would say, well then I'm taking my child to another district because I don't feel comfortable for them going there. And of course, we could offer the blended option. Um, again, it takes all of this same preparation to prepare for blended. It would be mandatory though that our students are doing one of the two things. Whereas with extracurriculars, totally voluntary, totally voluntary. And one of the things that we would expect from everybody is that we respect people's opinions on both sides. So if there are students that don't want to participate in band, even though they've been on band before, but they don't feel comfortable, we should not in any way, you know, chastise them, give them a hard time. They have a right to do what it is they want to do. Um, same thing with, you know, the advisors and the coaches. Those people should be allowed, because it is voluntary, to participate or not. Um, we will begin with caution, providing support to a small group of our students, starting with those with disabilities and the need for extra therapies and things. And ultimately, we will be opening this up and having more students come in and we do hope to get to the blended portion of school as soon as possible. Another reason why it's important that we do move forward with these extracurriculars is because it will give scholarship opportunities to our students. For those students that are doing very well in their activities, whatever their activities are, they will get the opportunity potentially to get scholarships and that's very important. So what is the plan? The plan would be that we would start the reentry process by allowing a small group of students with disabilities and other special needs to come into the building on occasion to have lessons and to receive therapy. At the end of the nine weeks and throughout the nine weeks, as we said, we will determine based on recommendations from the Health Department, the Governor, surveys, the Board's input. We would continue virtually or we would move to a blended model. So there's still plenty of information that needs to be gathered before we make that decision, but I do want you to know that we are listening to families that are ready for us to start really moving towards that and we're trying to make that happen. The plan continue. We will open up our fall extracurriculars, starting with practices and things on Saturday. We will participate in all OHSA tournaments. Um, we are going to ask that parents are required to complete a waiver to acknowledge the risk of participation. That's standard, all the districts are doing it. Those are templates that we already have. We also will allow any type of activities that are ready, be it band, choir, any other, um, fall activities to get going as well, starting when we get back from break. Um, these decisions will adhere to our public recommendations, public health recommendation, because the goal is to keep our students safe throughout this pandemic. So that is my plan, it's nice and short. Um, I definitely will take any questions or any comments. I am going to stop sharing and come back.
Thank you, Dr. Cosby, I'm going to open this up for discussion.
Can you see me?
Yes, I can, thank you. All right?
Hello?
Yes.
Um, just a couple of questions. So September 7th, the district and the, and the buildings are open to whom? Help, just, just help me, um, reiterate that just a little bit.
Okay, so school starts back up on the 8th because, um, the 7th is Labor Day. And starting that week, we are already, um, getting together the schedules for students who need to have therapy, um, or would do better according to their IEPs, according to our scheduling process, that would do better meeting, if it's once a week or as required and, and asked in their IEPs, they can come in and start working with their, um, therapist. Some of that has already started because we have some students that that was already a part of their plan. So that's how we're going to start the entry process for our students.
And you kept saying mandatory. If we make a decision whether to open the schools or not, why, why would that be mandatory for families to choose one thing or the other?
I'm saying education itself is mandatory, so they'll have to make a decision. They, if they are afraid to bring their child to school, they could stay, they could keep them at home. But if they don't feel that they are getting the best education possible and they may feel a real struggle to want to have them in person, they would, they are going to be forced to make that decision whether to keep them remote or bring them home. So that's why I'm saying we need to make sure regardless of whether they are at home or in a learning situation in a building, that they're getting the best education that they could get, Mr. Scares. That's the, you know, the concern there because it's mandatory. Extracurricular, they could just not do it at all. They could just.
Well, this conversation is not about extracurricular activities. My statement was about whether or not families would be forced to choose one option or another based off the school's or, or the district's, um, choice. I mean, they've already, parents have already been forced into a decision that has not fit the total population or student population of our, our district. So they still have the, the ability to choose what would be best for them based on their family's circumstances, correct?
Correct. So I, I concede if, if you feel like it would be basically the same, it is because you're right. They could, uh, they could opt out of their district and go someplace that does have another type of learning, but I think we're doing an excellent job and we're also keeping the students safe. But I hear what you're saying.
So I have a question. So Dr. Cosby, you're saying you first bring in those students who, um, would need, um, who, I guess you said are more of a vulnerable popu- population. And then at what point do you think you would start looking at, um, bringing in other children? And what, who would those children be?
Okay, well, we're already looking at that now. I mean, like I said, in every building, we're starting to put out the, um, you know, the physical changes that would have to be made. We're putting up our sanitation stations, we're putting in our limes, we're doing things like that. So we are working as an administrative team to determine what is the best way to do it. But a lot of people feel that the younger children need to come back a little bit sooner and those buildings are smaller, probably easier to manage. So, you know, and some children will decide to still be home, so it wouldn't be as many in the building. So I would say we're going to probably go that route, starting with the younger students and working our way up. And that plan is already being looked at, worked on. Um, you know, one of the. Um, you know, one of the things that we have to take into consideration, and I'm not saying whether we will or would not do this, but if everything were to get better and we could bring them back sooner before the end of the nine weeks, I do think that that would be a conversation that would have to be held with our teachers and our union because they're, they're just like the rest of us. They've made a plan for nine weeks because that's what we said. This is what we're doing for the first nine weeks. You know, a lot of places made people pick for the year. Um, more places made them pick for the semester, but we said the first nine weeks. And I think if we were to change that piece significantly, it would be a lot of conversation that would need to be had with our, um, teachers. Not to say it could not happen, but I, I just want to make sure that, you know, we, we talk about the promise that we made to our community. We also made, you know, promises to our staff.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
While I respect that statement, um, ultimately, our responsibility is to the families of this district. And while I do think that we need to honor whatever commitments we made in the moment based off the best information we had at the time, things have changed. And there are families out there that are struggling to educate their children, whether it be due to, uh, an overcrowded and, and unequipped, um, system where parents can't get on, um, wha- whatever that might be. We, we made a, we made a commitment to the first nine weeks based off the information at the time. Given that this is the second week and we realize that this is not sustainable by any means, we need to revisit that. And so if that conversation is happening now, then that conversation is happening now. We have parents whose children are sitting in their break rooms at work trying to log on. We have parents who are traveling nurses, who have their children in the back of their cars, trying to log on to do homework. You have parents calling grandparents from work, struggling to get their children to log on. This is not acceptable education. And while it may work for some, I think we have to go back to what the survey stated, when we have over three hundred families in the city of Trotwood who told us that this was not the best option for them. When I had the pleasure of going to the, the rally on Monday, when the families rallied for extracurricular activities in our district, a lot of the questions that I fielded was who made the decision for all of us to be virtual? When I chose, not necessarily me, but family members that were there, decided that they chose the option that they needed a traditional one. Nine weeks at this point with the information that we gathered is not acceptable. It's just not acceptable for those families that need something different. And we have to come up with a solution for, for those families, um, much sooner than that nine weeks. And so if that means discussions with the union and the teachers have to start this evening or have to start in the morning, then that's just what has to happen.
Mr. Scares, I, I appreciate your comments, you know that. Um, I am disappointed that I'm not hearing the same thing, um, from the community that you are. And when I say I'm not, I mean, I've not received that information from, um, my administration at this point either, not on the level that you're saying it, because we have been handling those, um, situations that come to us. We've actually sent people into homes. We have, you know, helped grandparents get their children on. I was at the, um, early learning center last Thursday and a parent came in and she had her computer with her of a kindergartner. And she, it was missing a letter and she wanted to get that fixed. And we offered her the option of keeping that computer from her, holding on to it until, you know, when we got back in school on Monday, because we could have it fixed. And she said, absolutely not. She said, my children are more engaged than ever. You're not getting that computer back, I'm taking it home with that letter. I'll bring it back in on Monday. So everybody is not experiencing the same thing, and I do understand.
I didn't say everybody was experiencing it.
I know, I'm, um, I, I heard you. I understand what you're saying, and it's not everybody. So we're trying to gather as much information, make the best decisions we can. And of course, we're always open to reviewing. That's, that's been my life for the last few weeks, is looking at data and making decisions. So I do appreciate it, and, and I am glad that you clarified, um, when asked about who made that decision. Uh, my understanding is that we, oh, I was there, we all discussed these things, and we may not have taken a vote, but we were all pretty much on the same page, except that you were not. So.
Well, no, that's not the case. And we won't discuss it in open meeting. If I need to call for an executive session, executive session, so we can clarify exactly what happened, then that would be fine. But that is not the case. When virtual learning came out as the option for our district, it was a surprise. And I won't speak for the board, I'll speak for me, because that's not what we discussed. The initial survey, the initial survey was misguided when we used the information gathered for those families to decide what we were going to do. The original survey was supposed to be used on how to determine whether or not, or, or how to serve the families that participated in that survey. But it was hijacked in some capacity to say, well, see, this is the one that got the most votes. When we left three hundred or so families out by the wayside, who told us this was not what was going to work for them. And we made a decision, it's the same thing I've been saying since that happened. We've made a decision for families that we have not been authorized to make. We cannot make decisions based off what is best for their families. Because whether or not, you're, you're hearing certain stories, which I, I completely agree on. I, I'm sure you're hearing stories, as we all are. There are families in this district that this is not working for. We have students, our church has students who are part of the district, who hadn't seen or who hadn't talked to a teacher since this has happened. And we become babysitters. When the original, when the original goal was to try to help facilitate the online learning experience, this is not working for everyone. And the only thing I have asked, and the only thing I'm asking now, is to make the accommodations necessary for those families who are struggling, because they are struggling.
When we, and this, this will be, you know, the last thing I say, because I, I mean no disrespect, and I don't want to, you know, like you said, I don't want to get into, um, this was what was said or not. But I know a lot of what we did was based on what the, um, CDC, the health department, the governor, everyone initially said. Everyone was in agreement that we were not in a safe space. And to be honest, I, I don't think people feel as if we have moved much further from that as far as safety. But now they know more, and they're saying that there are some things that can be done. And I believe that that's what we have been basing our decisions on. Yes, could we have brought, we could have opened up, and some people did, totally, you know, as if there was no coronavirus and then.
We were never discussing whether or not to open up everything. We would never discuss that. It was always the family's choice.
Some people may have chosen that. You're saying whatever people chose, that's what we should deliver. And, and I'm saying that there was a reason why we made the decision at the time that we did. But again, I, the board, I hope is supportive of these decisions that we're making, understanding that things may need to change. I'm, I'm right there with you if that's where you are.
And I, and I do want to be clear. Yes, we are, we are making decisions based off new information. And so just like you stated, when we discuss extracurricular activities and anything else that comes along with that, a lot of the argument is because some of the guidance has changed. It has. It has changed for us, it has changed for surrounding districts, and not just from an extracurricular activity point of view, but from an educational point of view. It has changed. And so if we're using the argument that the decisions that we are making are, are, has, has caused us to, to reevaluate, then it needs to be able to re, be, be reevaluated on the entire spectrum. Through and through. That, that's all I've ever said, and that's all I'm saying now. If we're going to use that excuse that the information has changed and the guidance has changed, then we need to use it everywhere.
You know, this is, um, this is not an easy time, I don't think, for anyone. And we're not going to get it right for anyone, myself included. You know, I'm a virtual grandmother teacher now. What I would say is, um, that the only thing, Mr. Scares, is, uh, we didn't hij- I don't think that our, our survey was not hijacked. Uh, I, I want, I don't want to leave that out there. We did the survey and it was based on the number of parents. So we went with the majority, um, on that, and I'll leave that there. On the other part, is what I understood, and what I'm hoping, is that the first two weeks, um, was for the, last week and this week, was to debug the system. And we wouldn't have homework. So one little child might not be turning in all those little due things that was due. Uh, let me go on record and say that too. But, uh, I haven't had the problem of not being able to reach a teacher. I'm only speaking for one child. And I do like the plan of bringing in those students that have IEPs or need, uh, supports for any of those special services. So, uh, I think a lot of other districts are doing the same thing. So I think we're on point there. But I think it's a time where we all have to understand, nothing is normal. And we have to agree to respect each other's position of where we are. It is, it is a really, really difficult time. Um, I, I know all too well, but I'm hoping, and, you know, I'm optimistic, that it's going to get better. And, um, you know, eventually it'll phase into a really bad cold, you know? And our kids can be back at school. But yeah, we will look at it and we will continue. But, um, thi- this is hard to get it right for everyone. Um, I, I, I do agree with you on that point. But yeah, the survey was used as we intended it to, from my perspective.
And I think we are going to have to adjust, not just here, but just in our lives in general. I mean, just, we get information, we're going to have to pivot and adjust. And I think that's what Mr. Scares is asking, and I think that's just what we just are going to have to do. As we get more information, we learn more, we adjust, we change. And I like the idea of bringing those children in. We'll see how it works with those kids, bring in more kids, and we can kind of figure out how it works and continue to, to kind of move it in and blend as needed. And then those children who maybe do not choose to come back or maybe work best virtually, might choose to stay home, which would then make more room in the school building and we could, school buildings, and we could do better with social distancing. I haven't had any problems either with virtual learning here at home. I haven't had those issues, and it's, it's worked fine for us. But that doesn't mean other people haven't had problems. I'm sure they have, but we have not had those problems. And so, you know, we can just continue to work through the bugs, move ahead, add students in as needed, evaluate and add more students in as, as we can.
Mr. Andrews, do you have any comments?
As school started back, uh, wife and I have a granddaughter, um, that was having some difficulties initially. But, uh, when she called in, uh, she was able to get some assistance. Uh, one day she was having trouble connecting, and her math teacher actually talked her through what she needed to do to, uh, get herself back up to, uh, receive all the lessons and that kind of thing. Um, you know, without beating a dead horse, uh, what Ms., uh, Jeter Freeman says is pretty much what I would agree with, on balance with everything. Um, we are trying to make inroads as, as best we can. The survey was used to take the, uh, greatest majority of people into account. Um, and then even though, you know, it's been brought up that we're kind of back in the red, I think that's a county thing, I don't think that's a city. And if it's a county thing, I think we also have to take into consideration the fact that, uh, University of Dayton has gone, gone back in school, and they have had an excessive amount of, uh, of, uh, positive cases there because of the way the students are, are doing things, which is a problem nationwide at universities and university towns. But in terms of what we're doing here, uh, we did follow the, uh, results of the survey, which was the intent. And, um, we're trying to open it back up. Uh, I like the idea that, uh, the, uh, special needs kids are getting like a first crack at, at, uh, coming back in. And I'm hoping that, uh, shortly, our younger folks will be able to come back in at some point as we progress forward. But I think that the initial topic was about opening up these things as well as the, uh, extracurriculars. And, uh, I'm very definitely in favor of, uh, getting our extracurriculars back up. Excuse me, my phone is doing that, so I'm cutting out.
Thank you. Uh, we appreciate your comments, Mr. Andrews. Uh, and thank you, Board, for your comments. Um, what I'd like to ask, and I just, I want to be real clear on where we are and where we stand. First and foremost, we did agree to the nine weeks of a hundred percent virtual. But within that agreement, and maybe this is my interpretation, I remember it being said that we will continue to monitor, correct? Okay? We were going to monitor, we were going, this thing was fluid because we're in a pandemic. We were looking at the safety and the well-being of our students and our staff and our families. So we wanted to make sure we could check those boxes. And those were based on recommendations by, you know, a- again, um, from the, uh, Ohio Health Department, as well as just us coming together and collaborating on the safest way to start school with the intention of making changes along the way, correct, Dr. Cosby?
Yes, we knew that we would continue to monitor the data.
Okay. Well, given that, um, when we initially said that, you know, we were going, you know, a hundred percent virtual, it was kind of like across the board how we were doing things. And then we have consistently monitored the data. And we're loosening up because, again, we understand, I love the part in your presentation about our special needs students. We understand the need for the, the therapies. We understand, uh, bringing them back gradually with precautions. It's going to be important to their overall health and well-being along the lines of making sure that they get what they need. Um, I've been listening to each and every one of you, and I, I want to start with saying, um, I know what Ms. Jeter Freeman said, the first two weeks, working out the bugs and all of those things. Um, Ms. Bosman hasn't had any problems whatsoever in her home. Mr. Andrews has had some problems and he was able to resolve them. Um, I want to go back to what Mr. Scares has said, because there is credence to that. Um, I, on the other hand, have heard multiple complaints. Um, I cannot go to the grocery store or Walmart without being ambushed about how this virtual learning is going. And it's not going very well for some parents, okay? I can't say all, but I can say some. I've also heard, um, not only is it not going well, but they find, they feel as if their kids are falling further behind. And that is a huge concern for me. Um, and I hope for each one of us, because we are in the business of educating kids. Um, given that, of course, we, we talked about the hardships on, on families when we made this decision. So we knew that those hardships were going to be there. And we thought, let's get the information out early so that we could, so, so that parents would know and that they would have ample time to make whatever the accommodations they needed to make for their families. What I am hearing is yes, okay, people have done that. What Mr. Scares said about kids in break rooms with their computer and parents, you know, dragging their kids along and have them in, in the backseat of the car. And, and some parents basically are just at their wits' end along the lines of what's next for them, because they have to go back to work. Some of them have been virtual, and they're trying to decide, what do I do? There were parents that have, that had four kids in the district that said, we can't do it. They left two in for virtual, they took the other two, and they're in another program, because they're little. And they need more instruction, and they need help. And poor grandmas, grandpas, they're struggling. This is what I'm hearing. And I, I think I'd be remiss not to share that, because it is a concern. As we move forward. As we move forward in these nine weeks, we're down two. One of the things that I sincerely believe is that we have to continue to make those tweaks. We're bringing in our special needs slowly. I think, you know, you mentioned we're going to look at the younger buildings first and go from there, the pre-k's and then the elementary's, and then we'll go from there. But again, I believe the same way that, you know, things are changing and you're making recommendations that are different from our initial recommendations based on the data and based on recommendations and based on where we are. I think we need to make changes there as well. I, you know, again, you know, we've had discussions about our desires, which is to bring all our students back. We want in-person learning. We all want that. I believe our teachers want that. As a matter of fact, in the survey, we had 77 teachers, correct, Dr. Cosby? Or 77 staffers saying they want it to be back.
That was, yes, blended.
Yes, and, and many of them want it blended and they miss their kids. I, I have to say this, I know that once we've loosened the reins here, we need to continue to loosen those reins even within this nine-week period. And given that, there are going to be parents that don't want to come back. They want to be virtual. You, you even said that, you know, there may be people who want to do extracurriculars and maybe who don't. It's their choice. And Mr. Scares talked about a family's right to make those choices. But in, with all this said and given where we are, things have changed. Even with the state, they've added additional dollars, I believe, for childcare centers. And they've expanded the bandwidth and the numbers in those childcare centers where they were only allowed to have a few, but now they're having more. They're making those accommodations. I believe with the talent and the skill set and the knowledge of the folks that are in our district, I believe we can do that too. Not all at once, and you know, we're not saying the whole open the floodgates. But again, start that movement to getting kids back even in a blended situation, even if it is before the nine weeks, if we can accommodate that. And accommodating that, you said that it would mean making sure that the building is right. And we're talking one building at a time. And actually, I thought we were doing this anyway, all summer long, getting ready. I know we have 3,000 face shields, I believe I heard, and we're getting masks in and we're doing all kinds of things. I thought that we were constantly preparing to come back. Even, you know, just because we made the nine-week decision, I was not under the impression that we were just like, okay, we're going to wait for the nine weeks to go by. No, I thought that we were still gearing up, not knowing what to expect. It looks like at this point, because I, I work in healthcare, you all know that, that this is somewhat of a way of life for us right now. I mean, you know, initially everybody was locked down in March. We were all quarantined, school came to an abrupt halt. But this now is, it's COVID is here. The spread is here, we're still where we were. We did lighten up a little and flatten the curve in some areas of Montgomery County. But again, at this point, we are learning to live very cautiously and taking precautions to be safe in every situation, even with the teachers that are in the buildings, our staff's in the buildings. And even with them being in the buildings, there are precautions that have been laid out and protocols to keep everybody safe. I believe if we can look at how we can, again, meet the needs academically for our students and our parents in that same manner, we can be very successful. Because at the end of the day, I don't care, you know, what we do, we have to make sure that kids are being educated. We have to make sure that they're getting what they need. And again, I'm, I'm hearing so many different stories about how that's not happening. And I'm not just saying from parents and hearing it from students, and I'm even hearing it from staff. So I, and, and I say that because I want to be completely transparent about what we're all doing. We're all one team, one fight. And in order for us to, like Ms. Jeter Freeman said, we're not going to get this right. That we're going to have to, this is ebb and flow. We've never been in a pandemic before, right? We've never had to make these very tough, difficult decisions. However, we're here now and we are making changes and tweaks for the better. And I want to thank you for that, Dr. Cosby, for those tweaks. But it can't stop there. It needs to continuously move forward so that we can hopefully and eventually get to the end goal, which is offering parents those options that we initially had in our survey. So again, you know, I'm, I'm looking at everything. So what I'm understanding, because here's, here's the deal. I think parents needed to know this too, and the board will say this as well. We never, first of all, we, we didn't want to start school this way. That's number one. Given that we did, this was the decision across the board. This is how we're going to do things. You know, now we're bringing kids back in, so we're loosening things up. And in loosening things up, it loosens up everything. When kids are back in the buildings, it loosens up some of the past decisions that were made. We bring it, we're bringing kids in now, you say, that small group of kids. So given that, now it's loosened up the ancillaries and athletics. Is that, is that correct, Dr. Cosby?
Yes.
Okay, because that's the rationale, is that, I, I'm just trying to understand the rationale. The rationale is we are now bringing kids in. And the board said, if we bring kids in, then everything should resume, correct, board? I mean, if, if people are in, things should resume. Okay, so we've loosened the reins there because we're bringing kids in because it's a need and it's a desire. And now I'm looking, looking at your presentation because we're doing that, it substantiates loosening the reins for extracurriculars, ancillaries and athletics. Am I correct in understanding that?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I just want to be clear. And given that, am I correct in assuming that, yes, you know, we've done this, we've taken this baby step, but we are going to continue to evaluate and look at the lower grade levels within this nine weeks to make some decisions, even maybe some changes prior to that? If it's the pleasure of the board as well as if the data is there and if we can be ready?
Yes, I, I am willing, like I said, to monitor. I know that in, in-person education is what's best. I do want to reiterate because I know there are teachers and there are principals on, on, tonight on the call. And in, in fairness, I want to reiterate what Mrs. Jeter Freeman reminded me of as well. These first two weeks have been to get the bugs out. So when, when people say that their children are not being educated, maybe they don't understand that the curricular piece isn't to start until September 8th. This is to get things going. So I, I just want to make that clear. I think if we're going to be clear, I think it's only fair to have staff to know that, that they, they have met the expectation. They have done the things that we asked them to do and they have done it extremely well. And so if people in the community, they may not understand that that was what our first two weeks are. Most districts are starting up September 8th. So they're not behind the majority of the districts. There are some who've already started, started after we did. We started a little bit before because we wanted to have this time to do it the best we could. And I just want to, to say that. But yes, I am hearing what you all are saying. I believe that is what we had talked about. So I think we are on track to do the things that we've said we were going to do. And we're ready and we will be ready.
Wonderful, and I am not disputing that our staff is not doing a good job. I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying what I've heard. And it may be a communication problem, okay? Because that's what it sounds like. And the communication problem is making sure that parents understand this is a trial run. These first two weeks are bugs. We're going to have problems. You're going, there was going to be some balls dropped, Zoom's going to go out, okay? Technology might not be like it should be. It's, I'm finding that most issues, it's not about what happens, it's why it's happening. And a lot of times it's happening because there's a lack of communication. And even in the short two weeks, you know, people were ready to get up and going and, you know, they haven't gotten nothing going, but this is our trial period. And maybe making that very, very clear and thanking them for their patience during that time. But, you know, we're getting into real school or real virtual learning these upcoming weeks as we evaluate for in-person learning or blended options going forward.
You know, one of the things is because I've had those parents that had those experiences as well. But one thing is, you know, the second day or the first day, my daughter is in DC, Zoom was out for her, it was out everywhere. So we have to remind people, we're not in a bubble just in trotwood with everything, with sports, with playing sports. You have colleges not playing, you have NFL, NBA not playing. So it's a ripple, it is, we're not on an isolated island. So we have to be reminded of that. And the technology that did go down these two weeks gave us a chance to, yeah, I was pulling my hair out the first day because I could not. But if I was behind it, yeah, you know, there's going to be bugs. So you know, some deep breathing, being my grandson, and you know, you work through it. But it is, it's the time now to assure people that even though they may think our students aren't learning, and maybe some of them aren't, you're on a Zoom call and there's a kid under a blanket and a teacher, it's a different kind of class management. That one teacher, first of all, can't do it, you know? And my hat's off to those that do. But then, you know, I have a math class where the teacher is, she's doing presentations, she's calling on all of the students and they are engaged. So there's good. So when you hear one bad, let's not put it out there that it's all. But there are bad, you know, bad, you know, things that are happening because of circumstances. But let's see the good, let's work with it. And if we have those parents that have those issues that bring them to us, just ask how we can help, you know, how can we help, you know? What are those things so that, to the extent that we can, we can work those out for them? But yeah, it's challenging, you know, I'm on the receiving end of this.
It's very challenging, but I just believe that all voices should be heard regardless, whether it's bad, good or ugly. You know, we have to address it as leadership. I mean, and that's really what it is. We have so much good going on in this district and we all know that. But when there is something that is not, it needs to be said too. I'm sorry, Mr. Scares, you had a comment?
I can appreciate, I can appreciate the superintendent's effort to open up the district and bring back those students with special needs. I would, I would like, I would almost like to have a weekly update on the reentry plan. If we're going to bring back the smaller age children, the, the elementary school children, I would like to see where we are from a weekly standpoint on bringing that back in. I, I, I am, I, I, I think, I, I don't think it's any, 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 what, what, what am I looking for? Any slight that I am passionate about, about the things I'm passionate about. And I think everybody is there. I do think it is a valiant effort that, that is put forth. And I think we do have some challenges that we have to, you know, address head on. But I can appreciate the district's effort to open up the schools to our special needs children that need that. I did have one question. I know the, like the state report cards and things like that are on somewhat of a moratorium. The, the K through three reading guarantee testing, is that still going to be? Is that still going forward?
Yes, there is going to still be testing. We actually start some testing next week. So there will still be testing so that people can gather data and find out where the students are. I'm not sure at this point whether we would be held harmless for those kids who might not make that. That'll be a decision, you know, that'll be made by ODE, but the testing will be taking place.
Has there been any discussion from ODE about whether or not that's a possibility?
That it will not be, that we will be held harmless? That's what happened last year. They have not confirmed that yet, but I know that the discussions are taking place.
Okay.
So that's.
You're muted.
You're muted, Ms. Jeter Freeman.
So that's the conversation that the board would have with our state, you know, board representative. And we have to advocate for that, that, you know, we should be held harmless because most districts should, but sometimes they need to hear us tell them that.
Absolutely. Any other discussion? Okay, Dr. Cosby, thank you for your presentation. So again, I like the, Mr. Scares, his request for weekly updates on how we are moving forward to open up the district or loosen up the district as a program, okay? And making sure, you know, how that progress is going, what it looks like in the ELC with the teachers areas being marked off and the distance markers. Because I know you mentioned that, getting prepared and getting ready and getting a plan. And then moving that into the elementary schools and eventually middle school and high school with some suspense states and, you know, giving people an idea of what may happen sooner than later, okay, if possible, and, and go from there.
One, one more thing, I'm sorry, Madam President, I apologize. Just one more thing about the virtual learning. And, and this is in, you know, this is me advocating for working parents again. The schedule that is provided to students where they have to, you know, your, your Zoom call is at 11 or you have to log in by 9:30. It would almost be easier if it's somewhat, kind of mirrored what we did in the spring when all of this first happened before the summer rise program, where if parents who are working during the day, who are having trouble getting their kids acclimated to the online learning system, weren't so tied to the schedule or ritualistic schedule that their kids have to meet from day to day. So they can say, maybe when we get off work, you know, we'll catch up our work for the day. That would be extremely beneficial to families that cannot seem to meet that kind of almost bell-to-bell type of situation. Is that a possibility?
Yes, we are addressing that. Ms. Mallory has thrown her hand up and I could address it, but she's willing to. So I'm going to allow her that opportunity.
Hi, getting in board, yes, Mr. Scares, that is doable. Right now, the teachers have worked together to try to, you know, try to put a schedule in place so some students can, you know, some students do work better, better. And some families do work better when there's. When there's a regular schedule, a regular check-in or meeting with their teacher at a certain time every day for certain classes. But in regards to attendance and consequences for not logging on at a certain time. Um, that grace is there and extended for working parents. Um, most of the lessons that teachers present are recorded. And parents can go into their student's Google classroom and access that lesson at a later time in the day if they need to. In regards to attendance, um, it is taken through access of login on the Chromebook. So if a student does not check in at nine o'clock or ten o'clock in their morning class when a teacher may take attendance. That teacher will be able to see that that student logged on later that afternoon or later that evening, and that student is still counted present for the day. Um, the law has, the, the ODE has extended us some grace in regards to attendance, we are still expected to take attendance every day. Um, but it doesn't have to necessarily be marked at a certain time um of the day.
Um, is that still in the works, or have we, have we gotten that information out to families just yet?
Um, that information should have been kinda communicated through your school, but. Um, I, I would think the parents would have gotten that information from their school. Uh, because I know there are some parents who have asked about, you know, that, that, that exact same question. I was not able to log on at nine o'clock, or we're not able to log on at ten o'clock every day, what do I do? And so those parents have definitely been informed that their students will not be marked. Absent for the day as long as they log on at some point during the day, or submit an assignment at some point during the day.
We can clarify that and make sure that everyone is aware of it, but again, I, I agree, we have talked about that, and I know the principals. Um, know this and that they are passing that information on, but it can be a part of our Sunday um message that goes out as well.
And I think it also hasn't gone out broadcast as well, I'll just be honest, because. We do want as many students who can to wake up at a certain time and have a regular routine of school as much as possible. Um, if they can, you know, we don't want, you know, of course, for people to take advantage of the fact and. Everybody's logging on at nine o'clock at night, or, you know, five o'clock in the evening, or because they can sleep in, etcetera. Um, we want students to have as much of a regimented schedule as possible, but of course, we know there are circumstances right now. Where that can't happen, we're in a new norm, and so we're being flexible with that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, Ms. Mallory. Thank you. Any other questions, Board? Dr. Cosby, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
No, um, I, I feel and I hope that I'm right in assuming that at this point we can move forward with the plan, and I would have. Um, the board's support on doing that, I, you know, I, I would hate that there would be any, you know. Misunderstanding in what I'm hearing from the board, so my understanding at this point is that we will move forward with the plan?
Yes, we will move forward with the plan. And we will continue to move forward with the plan, okay? With the other grade levels and the other buildings. And also trying to meet parents where they are. So.
For the sake of the live video, we're moving forward with the reopening of our schools, starting with our special needs children.
Yes, we are, we are, we are moving forward with the reopening of our schools and moving forward, and we had this discussion entails. Resuming extracurriculars. So I wanna be very clear with that. Moving forward, in-person learning, students coming in the building, starting with the special needs kids. Allows us to resume our normal extracurricular and ancillary programs. So, so I hope that answers, so yes, you have our blessing.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I said all that to say that. All right, and thank you for your presentation, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Oh. Okay, um, one second, I got out of board docs, okay, so I gotta get back in here. Oh, let's see. Give me a moment, I'm sorry, okay. Next item up um is item three, and these are community comments. Three-minute time limit, and I believe we have three community folks that would like to. To voice some concerns or share some information, so I'm going to ask if Ms. Heflin. Is on the line. And Janice, will you um make sure that everything is in order as it should be with community comments?
Okay. Yes.
Okay. So.
I know that there's two other people, Mr. Lumpkin and Ms. Cherry, I'm not sure if they're on the line as well.
We're all, we're all in, we're all in the same location.
Okay, okay, so we're, we're gonna start with you, Ms. Ms. Heflin, all right? Um, I know that you and I spoke at length on Saturday for over an hour about your concerns.
Yes.
For your son and uh for his future. So uh, wanted to give you, and I know also you had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Scares on Monday.
Yes.
Correct, okay.
That's right.
We wanted you to have this time to voice your opinion because it's important what you think and how you feel. It's important for you to be heard, so um please, you'll have a few minutes and uh go ahead and share with us.
Okay, well, we were all just concerned because. When you take away the um sports program and extracurricular, whether it be band or any other sport. It took away the opportunity for the kids to gain scholarships. And also to continue with the mentoring they get from their um, you know, their coaches, the directors. Uh, of their program. Uh, and it just had our kids like kinda broke a little bit. So we weren't just fighting for them to participate in a sport or an activity, we've had a fight for their lives. Because a lot of them started getting disheartened, their plans for going to school, they were, you know, like in my personal experience, like. It went from a hundred percent to fifty fifty that I might go to school, or that I even wanted to go to school. And so being involved in the activity, it, it does way more than just give them the opportunity to play a game or, or, or instrument. It gives them an opportunity to make a lifetime change because they go on to school, they go on to college. And they come back successful, they gain that education that's gonna, you know, uplift not. Only them, but a lot of times they come back and it'll help uplift our community. So we were fighting for all of that, and I'm glad you guys are listening. Um, and we all want our kids to be back at school, you know, so. We wanna just keep working and collaborating together as a whole community because that's what Trotwood is, we're a community, we're a family. We're fighting for all our kids, so I like the point that we're trying to get back in the class. But I also like if, you know, once we get this extracurricular going, then we can work to get back in the class and hopefully full-time. Um, sooner rather than later, and I thank you.
Yeah, and Ms. Heflin, I thank you, um, and the, the reason we're able to go back to the ancillaries. Is because we have gone back to in-person, even with a small group of kids. That is why, uh, and I say that because all of, everything that we do is important. Education is, we, hands down, we would agree, that is the most important. Ancillaries, extracurriculars and athletics, that is part of that whole holistic development. But it was always our goal, always, I mean, while you were on one side fighting for what you were fighting for. This board has never stopped working and this district hasn't stopped working, the superintendent, the directors, the teachers, the principals. To make sure that we could give our kids a balanced education, and with that, as we discussed. Is the ancillary sports and extracurricular, so again. That, that's where we are, this is, this is how all of this came to be, we've not, we were working on this all along. I even, I think that Ms. Mallory had put some things in place, even, you know. During this nine-week period to address um our special needs children and. And again, working with her um, her staff and also working with the superintendent to make it happen. So I want you to understand that it is so important for us to have all these things going as they should. And now they're all going in the right direction.
Yes.
You can't have one without the other, it needs to be, like you said, that, these are important things. And we are making that happen, and I, I, I was telling you, we were busy working behind the scenes, I know you guys did it. Again, communication, 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 you weren't sure what we were doing.
Exactly.
Yeah, but we were already working on this, this was already our plan, and, and being that this was the plan. It opens up everything else, so we're happy about that.
Okay, yeah, we just wanna make sure our kids get that opportunity because. So many of our kids have gotten out of the streets basically because they played a sport. And sports kept them engaged into their education in Trotwood too. And then it gets them further and further in life, and that's what we just, we just wanna fight for.
Yeah, we're gonna fight for everything, okay, there's nothing that we're not gonna fight for for kids, so we appreciate. You and um the other parents collaborating with us and being a part of the whole. And again, I just appreciate you reaching out, appreciate our phone call, and um I, I, I'm glad that. You know, our staff and our, our superintendent, our district was able to consistently monitor. Evaluate and get us to this point, and for that, I am grateful. So I, I'm just, you know, publicly saying thank you, all right? Um.
Thank you.
Thank you, who's next?
Ms. Cherry, Ms. Cherry. Good evening, thank you for having me to speak. Um, I am going to just piggyback a little bit off of what Ms. Heflin was saying. Um, my biggest thing was not to quench the hopes and the dreams of our student athletes. Um, I do believe in a well-balanced education, I wanted information about blended um. Learning and um with the virtual learning and things like that, but I also um feel very, very um. In tune with how the sports were going to be reinstated. And so you guys have put together um all your thousand plans and trying to um really. Uh, put a, a, a plan together to reinstate our sports. And you said that would be Saturday, correct, starting September the fifth?
Yeah, yeah, um, yeah, Saturday, um, I believe that's the starting date for the kids being on the field. Um, and I wanna reiterate, all of this is under an umbrella, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Ancillaries, um, extracurriculars, sports, but the umbrella is academics and student learning. Okay, and, and, and all that stuff happens and it resumes when we resort to the business of educating kids, and that is how that happened. All right, it never was to be taken away as punishment or, or holding anything hostage, it was all part of. Really and truly to make sure that all the pieces and parts were in place, first and foremost, to protect your children. And your families and our staff. Um, and also to do our parts and be socially responsible and flattening the curve. Uh, but again, we said initially that this plan was always fluid, it was never in stone. That's the beautiful thing about this particular district and its um leadership. Um, it is, it is always fluid because things can change on a dime. And we're gonna be very hopeful and prayerful that they can stay to go in the right direction, so I just wanna say thank you for your comments. And I think we have Mr. Lumpkin on.
Yes, he's right here. Hello, Mr. Moore, how are you?
I'm fine, how are you, Mr. Lumpkin?
I'm doing, I'm doing really well, I'm doing really well, I um actually wanted to share something that I received from. One of the student athletes in the college, it was their college acceptance letter, it was Dylan Booker. He's actually a senior at Trotwood Madison, a member of the football team, um, I think.
Did, did Mr. Lumpkin go out? I'm sorry, I can't hear, did Mr. Lumpkin go out?
It looks like his phone said he left the meeting, so something, he must have lost connection.
Okay.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
You hear me now, okay. All right, I'm gonna share something from um, from Dylan, sorry about that, we had some technical difficulties. Um, challenges are what make life interesting, overcoming them is what makes life meaningful. If I was looking at this quote a few months ago, it would have just been worse. Growing up and being protected by my parents, not having to worry about anything. And experiencing little heart, little to no hardship let me feel, left me feeling privileged and secure. The only time I faced adversity was on the football field and when my grandfather passed away. On the football field is a sport that you can take seriously or as lightly as you want. However, experiencing a death can be numbing and somewhat tragic. I didn't know, I know it at the time, but these experiences were forcing me to grow and learn. I learned that with each new experience, I had to grow with sports and, and newly found wisdom as well. The Fourth of July this year, I woke up from a nap in horrible pain with a fever. The sickness kept getting worse as the days progressed and I was diagnosed with pneumonia. I took medicine for, for that and it was still progressively getting worse, and so I was admitted to the hospital again. I was on an oxygen tank to go to sleep, and I felt a little better the next three days. They released me and told me to go home. That was a horrible decision because I was back in the emergency room for high fever and coughing up blood, my oxygen levels were very low. And I still had a horrible cough. When I got to the intensive care unit, I could not breathe without the oxygen tank, the doctors could not figure out. What was going on and I was still progressively getting worse. There were days when I, uh, there were days I was in the ICU and all I could do was pray to God and ask, and, and ask why. I was thinking and worrying about if I would ever feel, would ever feel better, I found out that I had COVID and pneumonia. Even at my lowest point, when I thought nothing else could go wrong, I got news that one of my best friends was killed in a car accident. Talking to someone every day, to not talking to them at all, and not knowing what was going on with myself was draining my mental health. These spanned events changed me for the better. I was almost, uh, I was almost put in a medically induced coma and couldn't even eat on my own. My free, my freedom, my friend, my old life, peace of mind and sanity were taken from me in a short time, time span. The only thing that I had in this moment was God. My relationship with God grew stronger because with all the uncertainties, I was certain in my faith, I knew I still had purpose. The fact that I wasn't in the car with my friend when I died was also reassuring that I still had pur- purpose and a second chance. I need this experience, not only, not only did my relationship with God grow, I grew as a young man. Having all the physical freedom and mobility taken from me. And going through ment- uh, going through it mentally made, made us so much, made me so much stronger and gave me such a new look and appreciation for life. I'm living, I'm living to be the best young man I can possibly be. I know that the best version of myself is yet to come and the road will be long, but I'm taking it by storm. I'm taking advantage of my life and all of the opportunities that I get, that I can get while I'm still here and able to. I'm living a testimony with faith, you can make, you can make it through anything. That letter was from Dylan Booker, Dylan is, I went to, I graduated from Trotwood Madison with his mother and his father in nineteen ninety-nine. Um, that was his college acceptance letter, he's a COVID-nineteen survivor and one of our football players. Um, I wanna thank you guys because I know it's, it's a profound difficulty in dealing with anything. Such as, as a global pandemic for anybody who's a public servant. So um, we appreciate the time to speak at the Board of Education meeting today. And um, I just wanted to share those thoughts from Dylan because I think it's important to hear the, the student. Part of our athletes, because we need to understand that they're the best of us, and I know that you guys have an understanding of that.
Thank you, thank you so much, and thank you for sharing that with us. Thank you, we, we really appreciate it, we love to hear from our students. Yeah, we love, love, love because those are the people that we serve. So we appreciate you relaying that information and um thank you all for being open and um partnering with us and collaborating with us to help us do more, get stronger, do better as a district and also um just sharing your concerns and your thoughts and we welcome them anytime. So one thing I can say about this particular board, there's never a time where this board is not open or accessible or um really and truly willing to listen. So thank you so much. Thank you all. We appreciate you. Next up, we have a board report. And this is item A, approval of Neola Board Policy Updates thirty-eight point two, winter twenty twenty. Um, and then I can't see this. I don't know if it's thirty-nine point one, fall twenty twenty. I'm gonna turn that over to the Policy Committee.
Yeah, I'm not sure if those are for approv- it says approval, but actually I think they're for information only.
Yeah, they should only be for information.
It says information, so the approval of Neola Policy Updates will be for next year, too. But it does say for information.
For information, yes.
Yes, so I just want those again to um the board's attention. There are several, many, many um that you guys need to take another look at um that we um looked at in our Policy Committee meetings with Neola. Just a few changes, there are a few updates. There are a couple that deal with attendance for um remote learning. As Ms. Mallory was stating, there there is one that
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry. Okay, um, there's one that that addresses that um there is, there is one that also addresses um Title Nine that was not um updated, so that's updated in there as well. So I'm asking you, board, to make sure you take a look at those from fall and winter so that we can get those approved at our next meeting.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. Next item, um, item five is the Treasurer's Report.
Miss Allen, for information only. And this is approval of meeting minutes from August the sixth, twenty twenty and August the twentieth, twenty twenty.
Okay, thank you. Next item, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Cosby, please.
Yes, these are informational to be voted on at the next meeting, at the business meeting. So it's the approval of the School Resource Officer Contract, approval of the Catapult Learning West LLC Title One Contract, approval of our Warren County ESC contract and approval of the Personnel Agenda.
Did you want to share some, some information about those items?
Sure, um, the School Resource Officer Contract, I'm sure um it's the same as we've had before. The Police Department in the city, they allow us to have a police officer as our School Resource Officer. We will pay his salary, but they pay his benefits. They allow um this resource officer to, you know, of course, be a part of our, our school district. And we do have um staff in buildings now and as we are opening things up, we feel that we need to hold on to our School Resource Officer. It will be the same person that we've had before. So I would like for you to consider approving that at the next meeting. Um, Catapult, that is another um annual one that we've done now for many years. That one is again about working with our students that um need extra help is the Title One. And so that's a contract that we've had before. The Warren County ESC, again, these are some of the students that need help that we are not um providing because they need more than we can provide at this point. So we have a contract with Warren County. We've had that before as well. Personnel Agenda, um, I'm sure you guys have have that copy of that.
Can you take us through that, please?
The Personnel Agenda, sure. Sure. So on our Personnel Agenda, we do have um a resignation. We have um some corrections on certified um staff salaries. And I think it's typically when that happens, it's due to um what step they're on, that type of thing. And as we approve them, it does say that the salaries may change based upon verification of steps and things of that nature. We also have um another teaching position that we would like to have um approved. And then there are supplementals. So we do, we're asking that our club advisors and um that they be approved to get the stipends that they typically have. Um, we've added on some coaches. Um, now that we are in agreement that we will um open up more things, there will be some more um ones that I would be asking that we approve at our next meeting as well. But for now, these are the things that we have on this list. And we're not asking for approval tonight. We're asking for you to look over that and we'll prove at the next meeting. And again, um, we will have to do it, um, you know, officially with the amount of notification for anything that we need to add.
Um, any questions, board, on the Personnel Agenda? Okay, um, the only question I have is um it's a recommendation for a new high school teacher. Um, it's, is that for a specific subject or were we short? Wasn't that due to a resignation?
Okay, as as you know, at this point, we're not really bringing on, when I say new, it's typically, we've had someone who resigned in this position that we did need to fill. We're not filling every position, but if we do have one that we have to um, you know, fill because we have students who need that course, then those would be ones that we would fill. Otherwise, we are monitoring that as well. As you know, we are not um laying people off, but we are not adding at this point.
Okay, okay. One of the things that I would like, and I don't know how the board feels about this, especially since we are still in that space of making decisions as we go. Um, I'm looking at all the supplementals and I would like to know what those look like virtually. Okay, because we are only loosening up, yes, you know, we are, we're saying that we're gonna resume. But what does all that look like as we resume for these ancillaries? Because normally, uh, this is, you know, person type things. Um, you know, so again, I I have some questions about that. And are these things now or the semester or? I mean, I I'm not sure. I'm just looking at so many supplementals. And I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, we can uh get some clarification on them as we, prior to the vote.
Yes, and I I will let you know that the um that teaching position at the high school is physical science and there was a resignation. So we did need to replace the physical science teacher. That is that one. And um, yes, I can um speak to the people who are um having these positions and have them share with me so that I can share with you how they see this looking, how how they see providing these um opportunities.
Mm-hmm, I'm just, I'm just curious as to what that looks like since we're doing things so differently now. Any other questions to come before the Superintendent?
Uh, just one, so that that explanation of the um of some of the supplementals will come before we have to vote on it the next meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And if there are any ones that are specific um that you have in mind, please don't hesitate to send those, you know, that over to Superintendent. Uh, but again, there's just so many of them. I would like to see what they look like prior to committing on on the vote.
If I can, I would almost, I would almost, you know, and I don't know how feasible this might be. But if the vast majority of our district, with the exception of our special needs students, are still virtual, I would almost need to see exactly a plan to some degree, how these advisors or the other supplemental contracts plan to do or facilitate uh that particular role virtually.
Okay. Not to make that happen.
Yes, yes. I I'm not sure, you know, what you guys have done in the past as far as having our teachers um share what it is that they do, but I'm sure they are very creative and I'm sure they would not mind, you know, sharing with you how they intend to to make these supplementals happen, you know? One of the things that we want to do is try to bring back that normalcy. And and we've already stated, every kid doesn't um play sports or they're not in the band or they're not the cheerleader, those things that are very obvious. Some kids are art kids and some kids are, you know, um, creative and maybe they're into journalism, that kind of thing. So I I agree to be interesting and exciting to see how these teachers intend to make this work.
Thank you. Okay, next item up is item seven, Discussions Items and Updates, Virtual Learning Update. I don't know, we already talked about this.
I know, I mean, I feel like we have done a lot of discussion about it. But I did um ask my um principals for their numbers um and I got their numbers. Um, and and they, they were um honest about telling me how many people, how many are active and what they're doing on, as much as they could. So I'd like to share a little bit of that with you. The Early Learning Center has three hundred and um sixty-nine active students. They have nineteen who still need internet or hotspots. And just in FYI, we did receive um about a thousand hotspots from the ESC, not to mention those that we had already purchased. So our students will have hotspots. So um as soon as we get these names, actually today, um, our technology people met with Verizon to find out how they are to distribute them and make sure that we keep track of of what's going on with them. So that's, that's in the works. That'll happen. At Madison Park, we currently have three hundred and fifty-two students. We have eleven who are accounted for but are waiting on their hotspots. Again, they came today. Four students who are pending withdrawal. Eight um who they're gonna have to make personal calls, which they've already done this because if they are not logged in, logged in and they've been getting phone calls, then the next thing we do is have visits. And we are at that point. We've already done some and this will happen as well. Um, we have at Madison Park, one student who is out of the country. They cannot return due to COVID restrictions. Four classrooms have had one hundred percent attendance most days at Madison Park. Westbrook Village has three hundred and sixty-six active students. The middle school has approximately six hundred and fifty students who are on our roll, six hundred of whom are active. And so they're constantly trying to figure out what is going on with that other fifty. But that's, again, a part of what we're doing this first two weeks. The high school has six hundred and forty-five active students. We are reaching out to a hundred and ninety-three who have not logged it, who have not logged in. We are actively contacting and reaching out. Again, a lot of the students were aware that the first two weeks and, you know, were just that, were just, can you log in? Most of our high school students probably felt like I can. And um a lot of parents, as we know, bring their kids back after Labor Day just as a practice. So I'm anticipating that that number will go significantly down and that would give us a total of a hundred and, I mean, eight hundred and thirty-eight students um at the high school. We do start next um next week, online testing. I know I've already mentioned it, but I just made myself some little notes to share with you because I knew I was gonna give this update. Um, we are making sure that everyone has access. So far, the majority of family feedback that we've been receiving has been positive. Um, I've received more today from you all, and so I know that there's work to be done. Um, we have, we did notify the community and um Mrs. Jordan Azix will continue to do that if, in fact, the outage of um internet is a system-wide thing, not, not a district thing, because that did make a difference. It stopped a lot of phone calls once people realized that it was um the internet. It was not, you know, us. So we're gonna continue to do that. Um, our teachers have got all the components in order that they have been asked to do. Um, their landing pages and that work, and it is a lot of work. And that is why we have the two people um in most classrooms because you do need someone managing, you know, the teaching and someone managing the classroom and watching the chats and doing that type of work. I did want to share a couple of really cool things that have happened. Um, Mrs. Mallory and Mrs. Minor created a video for home care and daycare facilitators and they did a live presentation and the video is available for people to watch to find out how they can make things better in those situations. So that has taken place and they have done a presentation um to daycares. Um, they also reached out, um, well, they, they were reached out to by Bill Lawson, a person who supports the Title One um areas in our districts and different districts. And they asked them to show how we're working with their students. So Mrs. Minor was able to do that. She showed them our landing pages and how we are interacting with their kids. And and like I said, um, there's a very, a lot of positive about Trotwood out in the community and out in the education community as well. So it's um, there's a lot of learning still to be had. It's a lot of improvements we know that can be made. But so far, so good.
Okay. Um, what is our census? If you add all that up, how many kids are actually?
Five hundred and seventy-five. If you add it all.
Twenty-five hundred, okay. And our, our census before was?
Ms. Allen, would you know that off the top of your head?
Exact number. We would have, we could get back to, get back that information to you, President Moore.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you. Any other questions, board, for Dr. Cosby on the virtual learning? We've talked about it quite a bit. Thank you for sharing the numbers. That's helpful. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the Treasurer's Comments. Ms. Allen, please.
Okay, um, I just wanted to say I extend my condolences to the young eighth grade student that passed away this past week um of um apparently asthma. And um I know that the middle school had sent out an email, I think yesterday or today, asking for donations for the family because they um needed monies to bury her. And so I just wanted to let the community know that. And if they wanted to donate, to reach out to the Secretary, Latasha Reese, at the middle school.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Allen.
You're welcome.
Um, next, um, Dr. Cosby, your comments, please.
Um, I just want to comment on the fact that I appreciate um the interactions that we've had today. I think they've been very helpful. I think that um our community will appreciate the transparency. Everyone likes to use that word and I think they will feel that we did do that today. And I think it's very um beneficial for me and for um the community. And I want to say, I do feel as if I'm a part of the community. So I I hope that everyone does understand that and know that all the things that you want for um our families, I want those same things for them as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Board Comments, Mr. Andrews.
Um, not a whole lot of new things. Um, I I feel like tonight's meeting was uh very enlightening and and very productive. And um I I I think that uh for those that listened, um, they they were able to get a a really good feel of how things operate. they, they were able to get a really good feel of how things operate. And hopefully, there'll be more people to listen in and/or communicate their feelings and participate at future meetings. But I think this was very productive and very informative for the community at large.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Mr. Scares.
Thank you very much. I think what, what sets us apart from any surrounding district is our ability to be passionate about what we're passionate about and still do what's best for children ultimately. And I can appreciate working with adults that can be passionate about what they're passionate about, and then say their piece and move on to do what is best for children. Thank you to the superintendent and your staff for all of the hard work that you guys have done. This has been unprecedented times, and it is not very easy. And I think all of us acknowledge that. So I personally wanted to say thank you for all you guys, all you guys' hard work over the past couple of weeks. I would, I would love if there was some sort of press release that went out saying how Trotwood is one of the very first districts, public school districts, to open back up on a very slow process, starting with our special needs children. I always look for the opportunity for us to be cutting-edge and trendsetters. And I think this is another opportunity where we have done that. I also want to, I want to be certain that we dispel the myth that charter schools do a better job at educating our children than our public school system. They don't love our children any more than we love our children. And if they are able to provide a service to the community based off what a family needs, then we can do that as well. And I think that with the staff and administration that we have, we can do it better than they can. So I, I just, I just appreciate the dialogue this evening, and I look forward to how we're going to progress over the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scares. Ms. Jeter Freeman?
I don't think I have much else, anything else to say. But I do appreciate the role that the teachers have to play right now. Hats off to them for having to learn virtually and then to babysit a class of, you know, 15 students that are some on task, some not. It, it is, it is, it is quite, quite a bit. So everybody, I need you to wear your mask, put on your gloves so the kids can go back to school in person. But thank you all for, and this was a really good meeting. Thank you, Dr. Cosby.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jeter Freeman. Next, our Vice President, Bozeman?
Yes, absolutely. I just, I mean, I'm just so grateful. I've had a really good learning experience for the past two weeks, having a sophomore here and me also teaching virtually here. We have been fighting over, you know, internet capabilities up in here. I had to have Spectrum come out and upgrade me because we had to work, and it was just non-negotiable. You know, I'm paying the bills, you know? So we, we got it together. We had Spectrum come out and upgrade me, and it's been smooth sailing ever since. I had to explain to my students, kind of like what Ms. Jeter Freeman was saying, is that this is just new. I was on a webinar with all these top CEOs of different podcasts this summer, and they kept putting themselves on mute like Ms. Jeter Freeman does. You know how Ms. Jeter Freeman be talking and she's on mute? These top CEOs of these podcasts doing the same thing. And I thought to myself this summer, this is just how it is. And we just need to be gentle with one another and with ourselves, you know? It's not going to be perfect. We just, this is just how it is. We just need to take a beat and just understand how, this is how it's going to go, you know? And so that's kind of how we've been approaching it here at home. And I can hear the learning going on behind me where my son is in, in his office. I can hear all this chatter, I guess, coming from his computer. And I appreciate that because I know how hard it is. I mean, your staff, your cabinet, IT. I know that you guys put in a lot of work to get that chatter to happen in that other room. And so I appreciate that, you know? And the only complaint he's had is that he wants to do it when he wants to do it. And that schedule has kept him on top of things. And so he's just like, I want to do it when I want to do it. No, you have to be on the schedule. And I appreciate that. I like it. And so I have no complaints. I, I like what's happening with the virtual learning. I appreciate all the hard work everyone has put into it. We've been selling along with no computer glitches, just with just the internet. And that was on my end, not, nothing with anyone else but us. And I was able to get that fixed in a day. And I just appreciate everything that the district has done. And we're going to continue to be gentle with each other and with ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Well said. My only comments are, first of all, I want to thank our guests this evening. Thank you, parents. Thank you, Mr. Lumpkin, for being with us this evening. We appreciate your comments and your passion for our students and what we do here at Trotwood Madison City Schools. I also want to thank our staff. And I, I just, the kudos. I, I've got to give some kudos. I know I did this last meeting. I hope I didn't leave anybody out. But, you know, what is going on right now is so unprecedented. And if we think about our tech people, I just, I just don't know how you guys do it. But I applaud you. I just, I know you're working around the clock, making sure that the learning is going on and people are connected, even when there is an area-wide outage. And again, I just want to say thank you for that. The teachers, Ms. Jeter Freeman said something about, she don't know how your teachers do it because you're teaching and you're managing this classroom. It almost sounds a bit like, Superintendent, I'm just going to say it, they need some help. Okay, but anyway. It's a lot. It's a whole lot. So, you know, again, kudos to you. This is all new. And, you know, again, working on the computer is not easy. It's just like when we're having these meetings, we're bouncing between the board docs and the Google meets, and it's not easy. So again, thank you. Want to say thank you to the principals. The administrators have been phenomenal in supporting their staff and their students. And that's important. And I have heard that grandparents are struggling and parents are struggling, but they are, they have been able to get some help. And that's important. I mean, in-person help, that's, that's just awesome. I mean, that's just, you know, we can't talk you through it. We don't, it's easier if we show you than we tell you. So I just, I, I love that. So again, I just want to say thank you to the help desk people, which, whomever's doing help desk, which is probably a whole lot of people. So I want to say thank you for that. And as far as the directors, you guys, I know, are putting in a lot of time, making sure that we have people in place, you know, hiring the right people and, and moving people and repurposing people the way that we need to do that for the benefit of our students and our district as a whole. Also, bringing our, our special needs kids in, that is just amazing. I'm so excited about that. That makes me just, I mean, extremely happy throughout these last months. That's like the best news that I've heard, Dr. Cosby, along the lines of opening up. Okay? It was hard to close down, but now we get to open up. And I'm looking forward to seeing what that plan looks like moving forward with our other kids and our other buildings. I'm so super excited. I think parents are going to be excited about that. I believe our staff's going to be excited about that as well. So again, I just want to give my appreciation for all that you guys do in the district. Additionally, my condolences as well to our students' family as they go through this, this loss. It, it's very difficult, and we've had quite a bit of loss. If we could, before we adjourn, could we all just take a moment and have a moment of silence? I thank you, guys. And thank you, Board. Thank you for the conversation. Thank you for the dialogue tonight. It was good conversation. It was robust conversation. I think everybody was actually doing their jobs tonight. It was a good, good night in the boardroom, right? So I appreciate you. Thank you. And I now need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions about adjournment? Great.
Yes, I have a question.
Want to say this?
Yes.
Don't start. Okay, Ms. Allen, ignore him. Will you please cover all?
Yes, Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Bozeman?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes. Motion passes, meaning adjourn. Thank you all for being with us.